Okay, so welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Fort Wayne Community School Board of Trustees. We are on Facebook Live as well as Frontier, the public access channel, Frontier Channel 24, Comcast Channel 54, and on Facebook we're streamed live on the Fort Wayne Community School Facebook page. So, as we do at every meeting, we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and now we will have the roll call of members just as if we were seated at the board table.
Thank you. Good evening, Steve Corona from the 5th District.
Good evening, Glenna Yale from the 2nd District.
Good evening, Tom Smith representing the 3rd District.
Good evening, I'm Maria Norman, Member-at-Large.
I'm Ann Duff, Member-at-Large.
And I'm Julie Hollingsworth, elected from the 1st District. And also with us is our Clerk of the Board Janet Doherty, good evening, and our Superintendent, Dr. Winnie Robinson.
Good evening.
And some other assorted guests. So, we don't have too much on our agenda tonight, but we felt that it's important to meet because we may have some information for you. So really the only business item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. So that includes the minutes from our last meeting, which was April 27th. They include the payroll approval for the period for vouchers and payroll ending April 24th, and the personnel report. And all of the board members have received those items and gotten a chance to take a look at them. So do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Yes, I would move approval of the items listed under the Consent Agenda.
Thanks Steve, thanks Ann. Okay, and we have been advised, because this is a virtual meeting, that we will from now on be taking roll call votes. So I'll call on our Secretary, Ann Duff, to roll and people can vote as their name is called.
Steve, how do you vote?
Yes.
Glenna?
What are we voting on, the whole consent or...
Correct, the entire Consent Agenda.
Okay, I vote yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay. And again, we have no all business, we don't have any new business, but we do have a report from...
Before that.
Okay, what?
There's no report. You ask about, you usually ask if I have any thing to highlight.
Oh, comments on that, that's right. I forgot, do you have any comments on the Personnel Report?
First of all, Charles is going to talk a little bit later about where we are in terms of hiring in this age of virtual and the coronavirus. Get, in a minute, we'll introduce, we have four principals being assigned tonight, but if you have reviewed the agenda, you'll also see we're starting to make moves of placing our interns from last year. By the time we get to the next board meeting, we'll also be talking about the interns we've chosen for this year and where they're going to be placed. So there are several administrative moves, some external candidates, some internal candidates. But if you give me the chance, I'd like for Get to introduce our new principal candidates, and they should be on the Zoom.
They are. See them.
Okay. Good evening, board members. Good evening, board members. I would like to introduce four administrators in their new positions. Lindsay Amstutz at Northcrest Elementary School, she will be the new principal there.
Yay, my all school.
Yes, yes.
Go night!
Lindsay Amstutz joined Fort Wayne Community Schools in 2011 as the Assistant Principal at Lincoln Elementary School after working in South Adams and East Noble School Corporations. In 2012, she was named Principal of Fairfield Elementary. At Northcrest, she replaces Diane Pelkington, who retired earlier this year. And Lindsay is one of our own students. She was Dr. Robinson's student when she was principal. Then we have Mark Bailey, who's also a former Fort Wayne Community School student, who will be principal at Kikiyanga Middle School. Mark Bailey moves from interim principal to principal at Kikiyanga Middle School. He joined Fort Wayne Community Schools in 1992 as a math teacher, spending the majority of his teacher years from 1993 to 2004. At Southside, Bailey participated in the district's administrative intern program during the 2004-2005 school year at Snyder High School. He then worked as an Assistant Principal at Snyder, Southside, and Northside High School before being named as Principal of Lane Middle School in 2011. He moved to Kikiyanga as Assistant Principal in 2017 and served as interim principal in 2019. Mark will be our new principal at Kikiyanga Middle School. One of our newer principals, Suzanne Teeman, will be principal at St. Joseph Central Elementary School. Suzanne Teeman joined Fort Wayne Community Schools in 2018 as the Assistant Principal at Forest Park Elementary. She started her education career in 1997 as a special education teacher in MSD Wayne Township and worked in East Allen County Schools from 1991 to 2011 as a teacher, curriculum writer, and instructional coach. Prior to joining Fort Wayne Community Schools, she was the principal of Ossian Elementary in Northern Wells Community Schools from 2011 to 2018. At St. Joseph Central Elementary, she replaces our beloved Bill Critele, who is retiring after 43 years with Fort Wayne Community Schools. Suzanne Teeman will be the new principal at St. Joe. Our final principal will be David Tiarina, who will be principal at Fairfield Elementary School. David Tiarina joined Fort Wayne Community Schools in 2019 as the Assistant Principal at Fairfield Elementary, where he will now become principal. He came to FWCS from Anderson Community Schools, where he worked from 2013 as an elementary, middle, and high school principal. He served as a middle school English teacher in North Adams Community Schools from 1992 to 2013. At Fairfield, he replaces Lindsay Amstutz, who is moving to Northcrest Elementary. Please join in welcoming all four of these administrators, who I know are excited to start.
Well, congratulations to all of you and welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have a report from Dr. Robinson on district planning updates.
Thank you. I'm just going to do a brief introduction, and then each of the chiefs will talk about, very briefly, some projects that would be of interest to you and to the community at large. One of the things we find ourselves, and we've said this before, battling is waiting on the Governor to decide dates when things can happen. We still are waiting for him to start some of his planning for the reopening of schools. That schedule for July, and everybody that can tell him, including us, is saying that's entirely too late.
We have, is waiting on the Governor to decide dates.
We're getting the feedback there. Do you get a feedback?
Yeah.
Okay. Not sure what that is. I'll keep going. So what we've done is we've divided our work when we started into four parts, and we pretty much have the first part done in terms of just how are we going to immediately handle the things we needed to do to get us in terms of curriculum, connecting with the parents, closing down the schools and the district. Now we're into planning what's going to happen during the summer, very specifically, with some major professional learning we have to do, looking at not only students and staff, but also parents. So we'll talk a little bit about that. We're not ready to roll all that out, because that's also dependent on the timeline from the Governor. We're also working right now on the handoff to the new superintendent. And that's something that board officers and I will talk about, the timing of that and the content of that. But it makes it a little difficult when no one's in the building exactly for us to really put some of this documentation together. But one of the things we are going to start doing is going into offices to get some of those essential functions done. And then the last part of our planning, and we're starting it now, and this is one of the handoffs, what happens when you start school? And right now, one of the issues that we have is the whole safety issue. We've heard, conversation started with the Governor about this distancing, and are there going to be alternative schedules, and how do you handle a school like Northrop with 2,000 students and over 100 staff? So some of the things, we can only anticipate what we may have to do, but until we get some clear detail from the Governor, that's in the last part of our planning, which is reopening school, and being very honest, that's something that the new superintendent will be dealing with. We're just going to give him some guidelines and do some of the legwork, but that will have to be something that the new superintendent put their stamp, put his or her stamp on. So what I'd like to do is, each of the chiefs has a topic they'd like to share some information with the Board and with the community. We're going to start with Get, and our favorite topic right now is graduation.
It is. I know that this is an unusual year for this, but we decided to start the graduation process in three steps. The first step actually begins tomorrow, where seniors will pick up their graduation materials. Each school will have one day where students may drive by, pick up their caps and gowns, they will go to the front porch or the big awning of each one of the schools and have a senior picture taken. Then from there, they will receive a senior yard sign to place in front of their home, and there will be a flyer to describe a virtual graduation ceremony. Seniors after that will go from station to station, they'll return their cars, and they will leave school grounds in a orderly fashion so that we can continue with social distancing. And the second step will be the creation of the video for the virtual graduation ceremony. That is very detailed, and we're thankful that Jen Attianzo, I mean Attianzo Fisher and Krista Stockman will be helping us with this. This process will take most of May and part of June. And our goal is to have a consistent template for all the schools, where schools will have their own graphic, their own logo, Dr. Robinson and I will speak, then we will have speakers for each school from the valedictorian, the salutatorian, and then the speech by the principal. We will take about almost two to three weeks to do this. It is quite a lengthy process, so there is a very detailed time schedule for this. But the goal is to finish those videos, hopefully by June 19th, somewhere between mid to late June. We hope to be able to give students copies of these videos. It will be posted on YouTube for all to view, and we will select a time when the video is done to share that graduation ceremony. But the goal is to give each student either a USB drive or a custom DVD for them to have to take home. The final step of our graduation process will be the celebration parade of students picking up diplomas and awards in their high school parking lots. That will occur the same night of their graduation, originally when their graduation was scheduled, which was June 4th through June the 6th. And Wayne will be on June the 6th, Northside and Northrop will be on June the 5th, and Snyder and Southside will be on June the 6th. So on those three days, we hope that the staff members can celebrate with the students. They'll invite their previous principals to come, and we'll have social distancing along the pathway of where the cars will travel. And the goal is to celebrate with the seniors by clapping, applauding, cheering, and just wishing them well as the students drive by and go to the principal to pick up their diplomas and their awards. So that's our three-step process. We're trying to be cautious about social distancing. We want to make sure, though, at the same time, we celebrate the seniors' accomplishments and all the work and all the wonderful contributions they've made in their learning for the past 13 years of their lives.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Is there, Dr. Robinson? Is there, if board members are available, is there a role that we might be able to play if it's nothing more than just waving or any other thing that you might want us to do?
Yes. In fact, that's why we staggered the hours. So if, June 5th has Northside and Northrop, so Northside will start from 4 to 7, and Northrop will go from 5 to 8, so that if you want to attend both schools, you can. On June the 6th, Snyder is from 10 to 1, and Southside is from 12 to 2. So if you want to attend both, you can do that also. So the goal is to provide those stagger times so that we can attend at Central Office and you can attend as board members.
And by that time, I might get a haircut?
Yeah. The one thing we haven't finalized, because I was supposed to ask, is, Julie, this is such an unusual year, and is there anything you want to have on the tape which would allow you as President to speak to all five of the schools? You know, so just be thinking about that, because we've got to get a tape.
I'll think about that.
But it's so unusual, the circumstances of it. But that's left up to you. I know sometimes you want...
Okay.
But I think having that as a, and obviously board members will get copies of all of the graduations. We've had lots of people, our original idea was to have it outside at the stadium, and we really were trying to make it a gathering. We have some guidelines from the state. One of them is no gatherings whatsoever on facilities, yada, 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 through June 3rd. Essential business to us is trying to get this graduation done. So we're considering this as central business. And so by the time, if you wait until later in the year, people have given us all kinds of suggestions, companies have all wanted to help, but a large number of our kids leave to go to the surface. So we're trying to get as much done while most of the kids are here as we possibly can. And I want to, first of all, thank the high school principals for their input. So we'll get Glenna's question addressed, obviously, by tomorrow. But any other questions on graduation?
Just quickly, I know you're going to make the ceremony with the graduation pictures and everything, but it's not going to be ready at graduation time, right? It's going to be...
No.
So it's not like you're going to be broadcasting that or anything during that time slot?
No.
Driving through. They're just going to come by, pick up their diploma, and we're going to congratulate them, and then they're going to move on, and the next person's going to come, right?
That's what the taking of the picture, clarify that, of course, Get, the picking up of the gown and the taking of the picture occurred there.
Are we going to at least put up the picture on a screen as they drive up so we know who's in that car, or...
No, we're taking pictures this next week of students in their cap and gowns. So that picture, along with their names, will be on the video. So that actual picture that they're taking this next week will be on the video.
Okay, but will there be like audio for the people who are there, where you're announcing the person as they...
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Is there families in their car, or however they're doing it?
Well, you're talking about the celebration parade.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying, you know, it's so, it's so hard when you're not all in the same facility and able to all recognize. I'm just trying to, I know after the fact, to get a video is kind of anticlimactic, so I'm just trying to ask if, you know, at the time they're getting their diploma, if we're at least putting up their picture and everybody's cheering for them or something, is that too complicated?
We don't have plans to announce their names or to put up any kind of picture. We will just have the teachers lined along the pathway of the cars to wave to them and whoever wants to be there on the pathway. And we will not know who they are until they go up to tell the principal who they are. Of course, the principal will probably recognize them. And we give them their packet with their diploma, their diploma cover, and their awards and certificates.
Okay, so it's basically random at that point, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so why don't we, okay, why don't we put this in print? Because we probably need to share it out with the community. Because what's also going to be an issue, and this is what happens when you have five high schools with almost 2,000 graduates.
Right.
We've got to also have instructions as to how many people, because we can't have one family with four cars, and we're trying to figure out, there's an issue of how this is all going to flow. So I don't think we're ready tonight to give details about the celebration. And Glenna's right, it needs to be a celebration. So we're going to do whatever we can to recognize the kids. Right now, we're just trying to get to get in their gowns, getting their pictures, to do the video. The celebration, remember, is so much later. Who knows what the Governor will say we can do by the time they do the celebrations? I mean, you know, so not being flippant, but we, the further you get into June and close to July, we don't know what restrictions will be lifted. But we know we want to do it. So give us a chance to kind of put that in print, and if you have ideas and suggestions, send them to Get.
Okay.
But we want it to be a celebration.
Sure.
Yeah.
We don't want it to be just, here's your, here's your diploma. And if it's random, it's less structured than, obviously, if they're walking across the stage and everybody was in, you know, lined up ahead of time. So, okay, thanks.
Right. Now here's the other part that Get didn't say, but everything we do and everything we're planning, we almost have to have the seal of approval of the Board of Health. Because they're kind of like deputized by the Governor to make sure that any large gatherings or anything we have. And so I want to thank Mary Hess. We want to celebrate, but then we still have to stay within the guidelines of what do you do? Now, I think we're up to what, 100 people or 10 people can be together? I've lost track. But who knows what can happen by that time? So if no other graduation questions, email, email them to Get, and that celebration is not in stone yet. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so now, this is, this truly is an arm and maneuver.
Kathy, a quick question, because when you were describing the transition, you know, and how difficult it is when nobody's in the buildings, I understand why we don't have students and teachers in the buildings, because they've been cleaned and everything. But is the administration building open and you guys working on next year, or is, I just couldn't tell from what was...
By Governor's orders, offices are not open till June 15th.
Okay.
So people are going in and out of the offices to do essential duties, but if you walked up the growl, the front door is not open. So the Governor's guidelines say not till June 15th. But principals and secretaries, we went in Monday, because people had to be paid.
Uh huh.
Okay, but most of the work, if you read what the Governor says, what the guidelines are, you're supposed to work from home, if at all possible. We also have the added responsibility that if you're in a health impaired group or over 65, you're supposed to. So we are working on re-entry plans, and the offices are open up under the Governor's order, just like restaurants and everything else opened up.
Okay.
So we know we've got till June something.
June 15th.
Right. But then we're in and out doing whatever central work you have to do, but if you can do it electronically, we're not having people go in.
Okay, clear enough, thank you.
And when we do, we're not going to have normal working hours, because then we have to worry about social distancing. So every chief in every department is trying to figure out, how do you keep a department where normally people are sitting right next to each other? How do people do their work when they have to socially distance? So the Governor and the Board of Health kind of guide what it is we do when we go back into the office.
Okay.
Okay, so Kathy's going to talk about a major initiative underway. Kathy, how people are going to get their property?
Okay, so when we left in the middle of March, the teachers still had their belongings at the schools, as well as the students did, and so we came up with a plan for how they could all go back into the building and get their things. This plan was developed with Mary Hess, because she is going to keep us safe, and Darren Hess, who knows about facilities, and then the level directors helped support this plan. And it was reviewed by the Board of Health, because we wanted to make sure that they would be satisfied, and as well, they wanted to know what we were doing. We designed this plan with social distancing in mind, and we are providing gloves and masks for all those that are participating and getting their property. It starts out with the elementary schools, and this week, the teachers, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, the teachers are going to their classrooms and they're packing up student items in bags, and they're being marked with labels, and they're also packing up their own belongings. And they are visiting the building based on their grade level. Today was pre-K, kindergarten, and special ed. Tomorrow is grades 1 and 3, ELL and speech, and then grades 2 and 4, and I believe, excuse me, I think the 5th grade also went today, and then grades 2, 4, and 5, art, music, and PE. So we divided those up into three groups so that we didn't have the whole school possibly getting there at the same time and having an opportunity to, you know, have some social activity. We wanted to make sure that people were separated so that we had as few people as possible and as less contact as possible. And so that, materials are going to be picked up by families in a curbside pickup fashion beginning May 14th through May the 20th, and that will be done alphabetically, and it will be done at a certain door of the school, separate from the lunch line, and that will be 10:30 to 1:30 and 3:30 to 6:30. You give parents two opportunities to get to the school. So that'll be over a five-year, or excuse me, five-day period of time in order to get that completed. And we will have security at each site, we will have signage, we will also have a place for families to drop off materials that belong to the school, so if they had media center materials or textbooks, those things would be also dropped off at the same time. Then for secondary is a little bit different. We have so many more teachers at the buildings that it's going to take a little bit longer. And rather than do this by subject matter, we did this by alphabet. So middle schools will be packing, the teachers will be packing their items, May 11th through May 15th, high schools will be packing their items, May 11th through May 20th. And this past week, administrators actually went through lockers and got textbooks out of the lockers, anything that belonged to the schools that happened to be in the lockers. Those have been collected already. Then the students are going to come in beginning May 21st through May 28th. That will also be done alphabetically, and they will come to their own lockers, they will pick up their items in their hall locker, as well as their gym locker, or the music locker, and their hours will be from 10:30 to 6:30 for the students to come pick up their items. And same as the elementary school, we'll also have security and signage, and so there will be a check-in process so that the school knows how many students are in the building at any one time, so we can make sure that we properly social distance the students too while they're in the building. So this is going to be quite a process, but we know people are anxious to get their things back, and so I think we've got a good plan here, but it is all hands on deck, obviously.
Kathy, a couple of things. One is, for the students coming in and for the staff coming in, we're providing masks.
Yeah.
And we're also discouraging parents and everybody and friends coming with them.
Right.
Because then we, social distancing goes out the window. So obviously, some kids who don't drive, parents will have to drop them off, that kind of thing. But the building, to Glenna's point, is not open. This is for essential business, and to the point of what's been happening with whether people have been in their buildings, the administrators at the buildings have been in the building trying to get this ready to go, and obviously this week also working on it. So any questions about this?
No, but I have another question I'd like to bring up to Kathy, it's a little different subject, is this okay? Tom? Um, you know Kathy, uh, this is probably more in your bandwidth, but several weeks ago at city council, the city controller came before city council and talked about the possibility that income revenues, tax revenues will be going down because of the pandemic. There'll be sales taxes, property taxes, whatever. I would like to ask you to think about what impact you might guess this is going to have on the future finances of Fort Wayne Community Schools. You know, I can imagine that some people won't be able to pay their property taxes. I think we need to start looking ahead as to what might happen if those revenues drop. That could be a very serious issue. I mean, we're fortunate we have a referendum coming up, which is outside of the taxes. But I think, I think we need to start looking down the road to see what might happen. Um.
I, I have a, I have a sneaking suspicion Kathy's probably been kept awake for several hours thinking about that very problem.
Well, then I have something else to add. I, I understand, I don't expect any answers right now. I don't know what's happening. But one of the other things I would suggest, that since Fort Wayne Community Schools is the largest consumer of tax dollars among our, all our local units of government, by far, we take more money and our budget is what, three hundred million dollars? Uh, the city's budget is only half. We take in a lot of money, okay? And I, I, I just think that, uh, the cost of that may be, the Fort Wayne Community Schools could take a leadership role and bring together the city, county, a few other people and begin talking about what is going to happen if these revenues start to drop off. It's not only just with everybody else, we're gonna have to work together, because we all draw money from the same pot. So Kathy and, and, and Wendy and whoever, I'm asking that we start to think about this. And maybe take some leadership role here in looking at local revenues and how they're gonna impact government. Because we all draw from that same pot and that pot is no doubt going to shrink. So I just wanna throw that out and I think it's an opportunity for Fort Wayne Community Schools to show leadership, not only on the state level, but maybe nationwide for a local entity to start talking about the possibilities of what could happen. I don't expect you to solve any problems and we're not gonna solve any problems. But I think if we could take some leadership here and bring the major players together to talk about how we're gonna spend our money, it, it could be one of the best things that's ever happened in our city. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks Tom. Um, and I'm sure that that, um, I, I think it's probably, and Kathy, you can speak to it if you want, but it may be a little early, um, right now. Uh, but, but I mean, I know that Kathy and, and Dr. Robinson and her team have certainly been thinking about that. Um, so I would imagine, you know, when we have a clearer picture of things, maybe in June, uh, we'll find out some more about that. Uh, but if we could just go back to what you were talking about Kathy, about the pickup.
Okay.
Can, can I just ask you, um, I assume that, um, at the secondary level, because we're gonna have students going in the building, we'll also have staff there just to make sure that, you know, everything goes smoothly, kids get in, get out.
Yeah, we recommended that the whole administrative team be there as well as about twenty percent of the teachers, so that we have plenty of adults supervising the hallways and.
Locker rooms.
Go smoothly.
Everywhere.
And we have security at the high schools and the middle schools as well as the elementary schools to help us.
And to Julie's point, this has gotta be a massive communication also to families. Because i- if everybody comes, if everybody brings five people, it, the whole plan collapses.
No, student only, student only goes in the building.
Right.
Right, right.
There'll be enough, I mean, so just to reassure parents, there'll be enough staff in the building that, you know, if a student has a question or, uh, you know, wants to find something that can find, that, um, there will be somebody there to help them.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And even Julie, if classified people can be of assistance, see, you've got a Northrup and a Snyder in some of these larger schools. Well, just think about Northside, how it's configured. Principals have been thinking through this with Kathy and with Darren.
Right.
Uh, and the intent is to keep people funneled, but they're high school kids and they haven't been in school for two months. So, so we know that this is not going to be one of those, oh, this is wonderful, everything, we're going smoothly. But I think our kids have shown that when you kinda lay stuff out for them and, and you got enough adults there, like you said, uh, so, so we'll be kinda making sure that, that's something Get will ask again. Cause the worst thing we need is for something to happen while we're just trying to get kids to get their stuff back.
Right.
Yeah, one thing I'm.
And if they don't show up for their stuff, what are you gonna do with the stuff that's left over?
Yeah, that's a plan B. Um, and it's the same plan we have every, at the same issue we have every year, kids leave stuff.
Sure.
Uh, so we're hoping and, and that kids are, are so anxious to get back, just to get their stuff. But Glenna, that's a plan B that we'll follow through. We believe most of the kids will come and get their things.
Oh, okay. I would, I would thought if you could do without it this long.
Well, you'd be surprised.
Huh?
Yeah.
You'd be surprised.
Okay, so you're thinking the vast majority of the stuff will get picked up.
Right.
And then that you have a process for getting rid of stuff that's left lying around.
Right. High schools do it every year. If I could, uh, speak to some Tom said, which is not something I wanna talk about tonight either. One of the things, and this is something we're gonna talk to officers about, and it's not, it's too early, like Julie said. But we're having some decisions made at the federal level that will impact our funding going forward. That the states, um, organizing, the Department of Ed's organizing, cause the way we receive some of our state funding and this, uh, Corona funding is being altered. So Julie was absolutely correct, it's too early for us to do any kind of forecasting. But you know Kathy, the day we left, she started having this conversation with us. So, so we're looking at all of our budgets. We had a grant meeting last week. Um, we're following up on all the potential from the federal grants, Title I, special ed. We're not leaving anything to chance that we didn't think about what the impact of the coronavirus would be. And we'll be ready for that to be a part of the transition plan. But most of that'll be conversations you'll be having with the new superintendent. We're just gonna get the material together, whatever we know.
Has the, uh, governor talked about using his surplus that he's sitting on?
Um, the, the governor's gonna get some money from the federal government. And we had an opportunity through Justin to have a conversation with a person on his committee. Um, so I think the governor has the same problem that everybody else has. How do you spend the limited funds you have? And no matter how you spend it, everybody be angry. But we have had opportunities to have some conversations about that too.
There are additional coronavirus monies coming to the schools, even though we're closed down. Is that correct?
CARE and FEMA.
Okay. And what are we, what are we spending that on since we're not, I mean, our salaries are covered?
Tonight's not the night we can even begin to have that conversation, because they're still putting out guidelines about how you spend. So it's not like we have the money sitting in our account right now. All they've done is talk about it. And obviously the minute we get it and get guidelines that make some sense, that's a conversation we'll have with the board, like we do every budget item we have. But we're nowhere near ready to have that conversation, cause we don't know what they're gonna tell us. We can do with it.
Have they indicated like amounts? Have they given you a range of stuff or are they, cause like at least families get X amount of dollars if they, you know, if they were laid off. Do we know what, what they're planning for districts?
Okay, the range they gave us, they have already changed how it will be distributed. So the range they gave us means nothing. So until they tell us what it is, what the range is, how we're gonna distribute, cause everything we do, we also have to share with non-pubs. Anything in the federal funds. So it, it would be a wasted conversation to try to explain it tonight. But just know that Kathy's on top of it. David reads everything that comes from the federal government and the state. Um, and we're as on top of it as we can be. Uh, Kathy's probably done a Zoom a day with state people in light situations. So as soon as it makes enough sense to have a conversation, uh, obviously we've gotta have that.
Alright, thanks.
So let me even just give you a timeframe. All this money, it's not even supposed to be spent until like twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. So see, there's a, there's a long runway to spend it. So, so the guidelines aren't as firm as they need to be. Is that helpful?
Right, it's not, it's not the short-term fix, it's a long-term something or other.
Well, who knows? They may tell, I don't know what they're gonna tell us, we have to do with it.
Right, okay.
So as soon as that's clear. So Kathy? Yeah, any other conversations about picking up stuff?
Not for me.
And all this, and all this information, the specific schedule has probably been communicated to parents, but it's also on the, our website, correct?
Yeah.
Absolutely. And each school is also doing backup conversations.
Right.
So, we'll see. We'll tell you next week how the first couple of weeks went. Okay, uh, another huge, uh, issue for us is enrollment. Uh, because that's usually a face-to-face, so I've asked Fay to kinda talk through where we are in terms of figuring out, can we get all our kids back? I think.
Hello, hi everyone. Um, we did a, we, we realized that this year, uh, probably more than any, we really, really, really have to get out and market, because we may not have an opportunity to do it onsite, uh, pre-registration as we've had in the past. And so a lot of what we're trying to do right now is to get people online, uh, working with community people and others to try to get kids and parents to get folks enrolled as soon as possible. So we did a soft opening on May one, just to kinda test the system out, cause we have some new features for parents to, to use. In the past, on the onsite, they had to bring in their proof of residency, their birth certificate, vaccination records, ID, depending on whether they were new students or not, as to how much of that they had to bring. Uh, and so this year, we have it available for them to be able to upload those documents. So they can go online, if they have an account and remember what it is, then they can just log in and do their registration. Uh, if they need to upload any materials, any documentation, they can do that. Uh, the first day we opened, uh, on May fourth, we actually had a hundred and sixty-three families that got on and got their students enrolled. Thirty-one of those were new students to our district. Uh, we checked numbers again today, so we've been open a week at this point. And we have eight hundred and seventy-five students who have gotten on in the first, uh, week of, of this timeframe. So we're moving pretty good, we're about the same track that we were last year. Uh, at the end of online registration last year, we had nine thousand three hundred and fifteen students that had used that, that, uh, avenue. And what we would like to do is see more families, so we can get a handle on how many kids we're expecting to have returned, because so many things are dependent upon that, like allocations and books and all those other things that they need to have. Um, at the end of, uh, the, well, at the time when we left, there were, um, we had twenty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty students in our district and, and we were up about a hundred and twenty-six from last year. Uh, so we wanna make sure we're at that number or higher, uh, as we start into the fall. Uh, we know that marketing's gonna be important, so we are looking at things like text to parents and guardians, using Peachjar. We already have something on our website, the auto dialer, uh, voice messages, Facebook. We're asking schools to put things on their electronic signs, uh, as soon as they can get those done. And we're working with Jen and Krista, uh, around all those marketing pieces to be able to get that information out as far as possible. But I think we're in good shape right now. Um, we're about where we usually are, but we really wanna do a big push. We had a training for all the registrars and secretaries on Zoom, uh, last Friday. And there were several principals who were on there as well. And we are really, really pushing as much as they can do to help. Uh, there was even a recommendation that as kids are coming and picking up lunch, having signs and things out there to remind parents that the online registration is open and that we want them to go to that site. They can do this on their phone. Uh, they don't have to have a computer per se, so we are just wanting to make sure we get the message out there.
Thanks Fay. One of the things that we're gonna be handicapped by, and Glenna talked about the office buildings, every single function that we have, most of it's face-to-face. And the Board of Health and the governor has limited how we do all of that. So we are getting real creative, trying to figure out how you get your work done when you can't just open the doors, growl and tell people to come, fill out an application. The other thing that Fay's been doing is we're trying to figure out how, um, yesterday the Y opened up a couple of more sites. Um, and so as other of our partners are opening up, Fay obviously is trying to figure out how we can use those partners to help us get messages. Um, so just want you to know that as much normal stuff as we can, we're trying to get done with limited resources at this time, but as things open up more, uh, we'll give you more information. So any questions of Fay? If not, we'll go to Tracy.
Can I just, what, sorry. If, uh, if we have partners that are open, have sites that are open that families and people go to, why don't we set up a table and register people there?
Okay.
We can't do it in our own buildings because of, it doesn't, something doesn't seem right. If you can go to the post office and you can stand in line and drop off a package and buy stamps and then leave the building, socially distancing, we should be able to function, uh, similarly. Because our kids are important, schools are important. I don't understand why we have these restrictions on registering.
Okay, our buildings were closed by the governor. Schools facilities are closed by the governor till June thirty. And closed means closed. There was, on a, on a, on a webinar with, with, uh.
Okay, alright, alright. So you were trying to operate under some, I would say unreasonable restrictions, but what can we do about it? So what I'm asking is, if we have partners that are open, maybe we could set up those as alternative sites for registration.
Right. They opened yesterday, Glenna, and that's what Fay's gonna have as a part of her planning. Like the, the Y only opened yesterday and they're under limited also, cause most of theirs was opening for childcare. So we're all being guided by the same organization, either the governor or the State Board of Health. And so in the Fay's end plan for opening up the state, as things open up, we have other opportunities, obviously advantage. But they're not wide open either.
Alright, what about grocery stores? Grocery stores are places in the community that people go and, you know, you can set up a table to sell Girl Scout cookies. Maybe they would allow you to put up a table for registration.
Okay, Fay has it. Fay, Fay, Fay has a team, Fay's working on it. Uh, the word needed to hear her say, we're about where we were last year in terms of people. So whatever we're doing right now is working. Um, if we find out that we're falling behind and need to add other things, we will do that. But we are limited by our one-to-one contact for the safety of not only the parents, but also our employees. Um, so that, that's the, that's the key phrase, we're about where we were last year. Thanks Fay.
One comment, wh- what about the possibility of like just handing out an invitation, uh, um, informational postcard or something at the pickup days?
We, we've already talked about that and we're planning, you know, we have to work with Food Nutrition Services, but we've had conversation with Chris Angelata at the, uh, Y, with Eric, with Joe Head, or Joe, uh, Jordan and others in the community. We are in constant contact with them and trying to see how we can partner for a number of things, uh, during this timeframe. And getting kids registered is, is just one of those.
Mm-hmm.
But I meant that they're coming to our buildings to pick up their things. Okay, okay.
Yeah, and that's one of the locations that we said, you know, that's a space where we can make sure that people are aware. Cause we're trying to push as many people to the online as we can. And again, they can do it on their phone if they don't have internet at home, if they don't have a computer. We're really working hard to push people in that direction. It's a little more convenient for them, it's safe, safer for them. And we're not having people gathering trying to, to do a registration form. But we are, we are getting ready to expand this even more than where we are right now.
And so our goal, I probably should have said this at the beginning, is to keep as many of our processes functioning as we can. And when we run into a snag where our normal processes don't work, cause we can't be face-to-face, we're coming up with virtual, we're coming up with partners. So, um, one of the things, almost anything, if, when you have a suggestion, send it to us. But every Tuesday, that's where we spend all of our Tuesdays and Wednesdays, trying to figure out, well, what about, what about, what about? Um, so the enrollment, we're about where we were last year. Um, if no other questions of Fay, let's get to Tracy, cause one of the biggest things we've gotta figure out is summertime professional learning. Because to open school, there's some things that have to be prioritized. So I don't want Tracy to talk about everything we're trying to do, but very specifically, some things that we're planning for summer P.O. Tracy?
Good evening, everybody. So, um, curriculum, curriculum.
So, um, curriculum, curriculum instruction and assessment. So one of the things that's currently going on is that our curriculum department is updating our district's curriculum. Um, and their specific grade levels and content areas based on the feedback that, um, they've received over the course of the years from teachers. And as a result of the standards that changed, um, this past school year, there were some s- s- changes at the state level regarding, say, for example, some math standards, um, some new ELA standards and then social study standards. So we, they will be making those adjustments. Um, they will also be looking at, um, fourth quarter to examine and determine what, um, if, what new content, um, or new learning that students should have, um, encountered over the fourth quarter, but were unable to because of the COVID situation. And so they're going to be determining how we integrate that into the fall's curriculum. So that'll be one huge component. The next will be planning professional learning around these shifts in the district's curriculum. Um, so we'll be looking at, um, science because we have new resources for that. New textbook materials, again, the new standards that were introduced, um, uh, middle school math. And then again, also the NWEA. One of the things I will tell you regarding professional learning and the curriculum is that we've, um, decided, because there was so much uncertainty around COVID and people working together, um, that we've, um, decided to postpone curriculum development for this year, the curriculum writing. And, um, we're, um, adjusting the work that was scheduled for next school, next summer to include the work that we were going to do this summer. Um, and then finally, as it relates to implementation of the curriculum, we will be implementing, um, completely, fully implementing language arts, um, math, uh, K-5, um, some secondary science. Um, and this again will be based on what was, um, modified, um, based on teacher feedback. And then we'll be piloting some new content areas like, um, government, um, and then social studies. Because we do have new social studies, um, textbooks and materials. So, um, the NWEA professional learning will also be a huge piece because that'll give us data at the beginning of the school year to determine where our students are and then how we need to, um, inform our instruction or modify our instruction based on the data we receive. So we, we're being very busy, um, even though we haven't been in school. And we will continue to be busy as we prepare to open for next school year.
One of the things that we're also going to focus on is as we get one-to-one, it only works if kids know how and teachers know how to use that technology. So if there is potentially a snow day, or if we have to break down again for the COVID, it's a practiced habit for kids to use technology. Um, so, uh, that's, that's a major part of what we're planning now. The only hitch will be if because of distribution, because everything's being delayed, uh, the computers we order don't get here. But we still will have a plan for how we're going to use those, uh, in the event of another pandemic. Or whether, we have no idea what might happen. But a lot of that has to be training we do this summer. So any other questions with Tracy?
No, and I, I was just going to mention that I've been in conversation with Jennifer about how do we ensure that our curriculum that we use as a district can be shifted so that if we do have to go back to utilizing an online type platform, using, consistently using our LMS and our, um, scope and sequence and whatnot, the teachers have the knowledge and skills to be able to do that, as well as our students and our parents, because that, that's a huge lift. So making sure that there, um, we can pivot and make sure that we can make adjustments necessary for that transition if needed for fall.
Thank you. Any questions for Tracy? Okay, last but not least, uh, Charles. Because in the middle of all of this, as you can tell from the, uh, board report that Julie wasn't going to let me share, we're still hiring people. So Charles?
Yeah, so at the, uh, beginning of the year, we worked with, um, Patel Cortez to select a new, uh, system to replace SearchSaw. And we have, um, brought onboard TalentEd, it's a new electronic system. And 90 to 95% of our hiring practices now have been moved to online. So we get done most of the hiring and everything except the pre-employment work that because of federal regulations, we have to see someone bring in a document such as a social security card so they can demonstrate that they can work in the country. Uh, having said that, we are, we have, or we will post, uh, 32 elementary teaching positions, 21 middle school teaching positions, 19 high school and, uh, 10 special ed. For a total of 82 jobs will be posted, uh, this week. That is down, we normally post about 100 jobs this time of year, so we're ahead of the curve this year. Uh, all the principals and hiring managers have had the training for the new TalentEd system. We put some new processes in place to help us with selecting strong candidates. Um, so we're very happy with how that process has, uh, transpired. Retirement are down as well. We don't have as many people opting to retire. So all in all, we're ahead of where we normally are this time of year.
Any questions for Charles?
Charles, do we have, do we have an HR director yet?
No, I was just talking to Dr. Robinson about that. I have some strong candidates, but I've, I've been a little preoccupied. So we have not made that selection yet.
I understand. Just curious.
Well, I'm the interim HR director, so.
Then it's in good hands.
Yeah.
Luckily, you have a, a little experience in that realm.
Just a tad, yes.
And one of the things, Julie, I'm glad you asked that question because I want to highlight all the chiefs and then the kind of work they're doing. But because of Charles's expertise, he rattled off a lot of systems we changed. One of them was we had concerns about how we hire people, how long it takes, those kinds, there are some major systems. Yet and Charles worked on how you get the best candidate. And so it's, it's, it was a little, uh, nerve-wracking to think you're bringing somebody in brand new to implement that many systems. So Charles, um, is kind of keeping the reins until we're very comfortable that that, all those systems are ready enough to turn over to someone else at this point. I was trying to be politically correct, but that really is our issue at this point. We got a lot of new stuff. Okay, board members, any other? Um, I just say pray for us. We're trying to get the kids in the building. Um, Julie's a high school person, so she knows what, what kind of things we're, we're trying to safeguard against. Um, we're still continuing up to the 28, um, working on getting as many kids. The state's changed their mind three and four different times about what it takes to graduate, but we're trying to finish off so the kids don't have questions as they move on to college. Uh, one of the things I said to get, uh, we've been working on, it's not quite ready yet. Especially for seniors, a separate document that explains, here's the kind of work we did with your child and here's the result. Because the state has guidelines about how kids can graduate, but we think the kids and the parents deserve it. Here's how much work we put into it, here's what happened with your child, which is over and above a grade card. So just know all those specialized things that we did, we're going to develop a process for communicating with the student and the parent. So, um, if nothing else, that's, that's our sharing tonight. Any questions you have?
Um, how many, how many students will be graduating this year?
You have the number yet?
It's a little over 2,000. 1,020 something.
We can get you an exact number.
Yes, we'll get you an exact.
Anything else? Um, okay, so I think that brings us to the, uh, close of our meeting. Um, I apologize for my barking dog in the background. But I think that only leaves us with, um, board member comments.
Yes, I'll start off, um, just a couple of things. First of all, I've been monitoring our Facebook traffic and although it's tapered off a little bit, we started with more than 200, uh, followers, including a couple of teachers. I saw Tim Martone's name there, uh, Jeannie Letstone, uh, Jamie Garwood, Leah Giaquina, Jennifer Mathias, some of them asking some really good questions. Um, I know some parents aren't really happy with, uh, the fact that our traditional graduation ceremony won't be held this year. But, um, I, I would just say that we did our best with over 2,000 students at five schools. Um, I think the alternative celebration ceremonies sound interesting. Um, and I just want to report to what the other districts in the county are doing. Um, both East, Allen and Southwest are tentatively, and I use the word strongly, tentatively planning ceremonies in July. Chris Himsel at Northwest is going to make a decision next month. Um, I would just suggest that there is some risk in thinking that ceremonies might be allowable in July at all costs. So, um, I like the fact that we've made a plan, we're moving forward with it. Um, and it's, I, I think we're going to have to do with what we have. Um, just wanted to shout out to the four principals that we identified with new assignments, especially those that are attached to elementary schools. Please invite your board members to come in and visit and read. This past year, I really enjoyed my visit at Frankie Park. I got to read Dr. Seuss. Um, and part of it was that I was throwing out words in Spanish to some of the kids. And our Latino students really were excited about that, that somebody was talking in their first language. So please invite us to your schools once you get settled. Um, wanted to report to my fellow board members, some comments made at a regional roundtable of, um, school board presidents in East Central and Northeast Indiana. And we talked about, this was about a week ago, we had an online Zoom discussion. Um, everybody, irrespective of size, whether they're rural or urban in nature, struggling with the same issues of, uh, connectivity. Uh, rural schools, uh, really struggling with that. Uh, some of the schools are planning graduation ceremonies, of course. That's a heck of a lot easier when all you have is 100 or 150 students graduating from your school. So they're going that way. Um, and, uh, I think the other issue that, that the Indiana School Boards Association is going to take a look at is as they develop a statewide agenda and begin to sit down with state house leaders and the governor, is what do we do next year with respect to, uh, testing and assessments of both students and school districts? Um, and whether there might be consideration of a waiver, given the fact that we've had, um, this long period of not being in school. So, um, ISBA is going to be taking a look at that. I know that they would welcome comments from any of, um, any administrator or school board member that what that message to the governor is going to be. Um, it's going to be a different year. Um, and so we've got to prepare and think about, um, you know, what, what are those issues that we need to talk about to make sure that we're delivering our very best and yet at the same time, giving consideration to students and districts, um, about the situations that we're now enduring. Thank you.
Thanks Steve. Glenn?
No comments tonight.
Tom?
Uh, nothing more tonight.
Maria?
I have no comments.
Ann?
I'm just, everybody be safe. I know that the, uh, guidelines have changed, but we still need to be prudent in, um, what you're doing, washing your hands, wearing a mask, that type of thing. Um, still need to be careful.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thanks to everybody that, um, reported tonight and your hard work. Um, thanks to our teachers, uh, who are still, um, teaching. Uh, our official end of school date, uh, Dr. Robinson, is that May 28?
28, mm-hmm.
28, okay.
29.
Right, right, so, um, about two and a half weeks left to go. Um, and, uh, thank you to all our staff that, you know, cleaning staff and food staff and, and everybody that is, um, continuing to work, um, and serve the district. Um, just, uh, an update on what's coming up. We will meet next Monday on May 18th. And, um, the first part of that will be a public hearing for public comment on the, um, new superintendent contract, the details of which were published in the paper this past Friday. Um, so, and that will again be, uh, Facebook Live. And you will be able to, um, submit your public comment on, um, Facebook Live. Um, that will be, um, followed by, and Indiana law says you have to wait a week. So then we will have a special meeting, um, planned on May 26th. Um, I believe that's going to be at 4 o'clock. And the, um, sole item on that agenda will be to approve the next superintendent contract. And at that time, we will, um, introduce, um, Dr. Robinson's successor at that meeting. And that person will have a chance to, um, introduce themselves and speak to the community. Um, let's see, so, um, that's all I have. Uh, unless anyone thinks of anything, uh, excuse me, anything else they want to mention?
I'd go for adjournment.
Okay, thank you Steve. Thank you Maria. Uh, so Ann, roll call vote on whether to adjourn or not?
Steve, turn it adjourned? Uh, Glenn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Okay, so, uh, we'll see you same time, same place a week from tonight. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.